I thought of the auto train. I did that once before, but the auto train, like you go through the hardest part of the trip to get to the auto. You know what I mean? Like driving through South Carolina is easy. Driving through Washington is...
I refuse to do that anymore. I take the ferry.
So you do the ferry in 3:01, huh?
How you doing? You all right?
I do the ferry and go down 13 or 1, whatever the heck it is.
Okay, 13.
I pick up 95 below Washington.
Do I have time to go stop? I'm gonna...
Uh, yes. Oh, I can see if that's blue.
I know, I didn't...
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of them here.
I did.
Yeah, you gotta do whatever.
I couldn't even get this one.
Glad it's going well. It's been expecting to give us our... Great stuff.
Thank you.
It's always the way things go. Unfortunate, but yeah.
Thank you, God, everyone. Oh, yeah. Check. This stuff really don't do care, but...
St. Augustine?
I thought if I lived there year-round, they have a winner.
They do?
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets to be like 40, sometimes 30s.
Yeah, and I just always liked it when I was little, so...
See, oldest city in America.
I know, that's where the first Thanksgiving was.
Yeah.
The first Thanksgiving was gator and crab and, yeah, all those delicacies. It wasn't turkey and... But I'm hoping to get somewhere. Oh, look, there's a tent. So when I went as a child to Florida, when I went to Florida as a child, it was a three-day drive. There was no 95.
No, it was all Route 1.
Yeah.
When I first started going.
Bring him in.
Before I went down the road, I thumped.
Oh, yeah.
They mailed it.
Oh, good. Yeah, how long did that take?
We left Friday night and goddamn Monday morning.
Oh, you did well.
I had a series of misfortunes. I had a clock stop at some... It looks good. In my office, I was like, almost late here. This went out, so I had to find it. I got these at the last minute. It's crazy.
He says, "The only thing you gotta be careful of is in even an open time with the bright sun. I think sure have some sort of... You know, actually..."
Right.
"Okay, you'll have a..."
Yeah.
For years. We're not supposed to be... I... This is part of the area. We're not supposed to... Those are those... Maybe it published better than... Maybe a bit. Yeah, 'cause I had... But I... I get a good doctor's research and so it was... There was a series of... And so I went to... This is in the background. They all closed. And he died.
Really?
I mean, they closed like 30. This is the... It's bad. Sorry. You need some work area.
You do what you can and you just hope for the best.
I also... Um, but that... Yeah, exactly. It's like somewhere some sports player died at 72 years old.
I'm 74 now, and I outlived him anyways, so...
No. Wait, yeah, we're 70. No, we're 70. Oh, you just turned 70.
I just turned 70.
I'll be 70. We'll just do the best we can.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Pretty easy.
I know. I feel really blessed to lead my job, but I got to teach for so many years.
Same good as getting from Jersey. I decided to leave, 12 hours.
It's tough to leave something you've been at.
Oh, it's so hard. It's really, and I love it, you know?
It's like this job, just... I love being involved.
I'm gonna miss it.
I know.
Yeah, I'll miss you.
I wasn't sure. Like, you know, you could say Stacy and Jordan Coleman.
Yeah, it's gonna happen.
Right.
And then Stacy left. We'll be around. We'll have some talk.
Yeah. Now, I'm glad you know, I built your company and I appreciate everything you've done.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Jason? Uh, no, I think they'll fit right in.
Eighteen-year coming up.
Wow. I can't get YouTube video. We are on live stream.
We have a letter from our parents.
What's that?
All of a sudden, she really couldn't speak.
Yeah.
Word letter?
Yes. I put it in everybody's pocket. Do you want mine?
Uh-huh.
Do you want mine?
True.
But you can kind of know when it's time.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not it.
I've been talking to all of my life.
That's Department of Transportation.
I went there. I left Addison. Started one year on the plane. I don't know anything else but that.
I know.
Yeah. All total.
Where's the... Wow, it's amazing, like you think of what you're gonna do, and then it just goes.
Well, I moved in, I was a kid. I was seventeen.
Yeah.
Seventeen. And like, back then, they'd phone up the sidewalks with Free Casino, whatever. And even then, like September, by like November, I went... I'm moving backward.
Are you okay, Janice? They turned off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I know. I know, it was crazy. Okay, and then I got a job.
What did you do in...
I was director of public service. And then when I went to Addison, I was the administrator. So I was only, it was a provisional position because I...
Sorry, I'm upstairs.
They wanted me to stay permanent, but...
That's right.
Thanks for getting all these signatures.
Bear with us, we got a few technical difficulties to go through. Once we get through it, we get through it. Gotta yell it.
I enjoyed being here.
Bear with us, please. We do have a few technical difficulties we're getting through, and then, once we get through that, we'll get moving on.
Why is there another one?
Eventually, I just... I've been waiting 25 years.
Yes, thank you very much.
But ironically, when I got to... You know, we had our different people. Right after I was doing...
Yeah, she saved the day.
Absolutely. It's all been a job.
No.
A year ago, a job. It's all been... You worked for a city, Rich Steed?
Green Team.
Yeah.
Yep.
I thought so myself. Sure, I'm not that smart.
Yes.
He's a scenario.
Thanks so much.
I got to be extremely friendly. Very good, very nice. I never say about... I say I'm not a close... And I met him one time on a boardwalk when I was up with my granddaddy. And he just said... He stood by your opinion, and that's what I tell him. He says, "I was... He says, "Be honest with me, I really didn't want you to leave." He says, "Be honest with me, I really didn't want you to leave."
Yes, ma'am.
I said, "That's the key."
Welcome, everyone. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Bruno?
Here.
Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Councilmember DePantholos?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan?
Here.
Councilmember Dill?
Here.
Council President Johnston?
Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Samuelson, City Solicitor Smith, and City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org.
We have a couple of special presentations we're gonna start with tonight. Our Senator Polisina is here with us, and he has a special presentation that he'd like to do.
Do you have that one set up later?
I do.
Do you wanna...
Yes, Senator, you can use that.
Mayor, do you wanna...
You're welcome.
Well, I got some... My horse.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Mayor, City Council, great to be here. Woo! Not gonna touch that again. Here to present a joint legislative commendation, of course, to our great Mayor Jack Glasser on behalf of Assemblyman Guardian, Assemblywoman Swift and I. I met Jack at St. Joe's back in the day when kids were little, and he was the coordinator for the traffic out back. And if you can get traffic in and out of St. Joe's with minimal impact and everything safe, I think you can do just about anything. So, had a long history with Jack. I think when you look up public service in the dictionary, it reads Jack Glasser, because when you think about the military and the Jersey Devils and the law enforcement and council and mayor and everything he has done in his career, it is really amazing. Everyone you have touched and everything you have done in your career. And the events in Summers Point, whether it's 9/11 or Memorial Day Parade or all the various things you do here, testament to you and the City Council, were just fabulous events that you do in the city. So, I just wanna thank you on behalf of everyone in District 2. I'm not gonna read the proclamation. You can certainly do that with Diane at home, but we do wanna present it to you. Thank you for all your years of service. Wish you the best of luck in everything you're gonna do now. And Diane, if you ever wanna send him down the road, we always need some help in the office over there, in the legislative office. So, feel free, we're always here. And Jack, thank you very much for everything, and we'll be seeing you soon.
Sure.
I wanted to come out and make sure she was here for this. Carol's in the back there. A new job from St. Joe's as well, so certainly wanted to congratulate you.
Senator, you really honored me to be here this evening, especially you're busy, especially Carol, you know, one of the great moms in St. Joe's. But I thank you, and I'm very humbled by this. You know, I'll say some few things down the road. I'm saving my comments for better time earlier. Within the presentation...
Senator, I appreciate it. Thank you. And Ray, maybe...
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
We'll just do that one after. Hey. Okay. Could I have a motion to open for public comment for Resolutions Number 252, 258, 261, and 267 only?
I'll make that motion.
Seven. All in favor?
Okay.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on those four resolutions. Can I have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um... Do you want to do that one after? Resolution Number 252 of 2023 honoring and thanking the Honorable Mayor John L. Glasser, Jr., whereas on January 4, 2008, John L. Glasser, Jr., was sworn in as a duly-elected mayor of the City of Summers Point to serve the city for four years, and whereas Mayor Glasser would be elected three more times to serve as mayor for a total of 16 years, and whereas Mayor Glasser is a veteran of the United States Air Force, retired as a Master Sergeant of the New Jersey Air National Guard's 177th Fighter Wing after 24 years of service, and whereas Mayor Glasser also served as a law enforcement officer with a distinction for 25 years with the Northfield Police Department, retiring in 2002 with the rank of captain, and whereas Mayor Glasser has been a member of the St. Joseph Knights of Columbus, served as a eucharistic minister, volunteered as a basketball coach, served on the Bay Fest Committee, and worked within Miss America Paget, and whereas Mayor Glasser has always been a strident supporter of the county's military veterans and veterans' causes, spearheading the effort to create the Summers Point Veterans Advisory Board in 2019, and whereas Mayor Glasser is valued as a colleague and a friend and always gives his time generously to assist others, and now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the City Council of Summers Point express their deepest appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Glasser for a lifetime of dedicated public service, including 16 years as mayor, and his unwavering commitment to the betterment of Summers Point and its residents, and be it further resolved that the City Council conveys their congratulations to Mayor Glasser upon his retirement as mayor and offer their best wishes to him and to his family. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments? Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, I reflect back 16 years ago when I was able to ride your coattails and land in this spot. I can't thank you enough for that. And I reflect over those 16 years and look at you as an example, a fine example of what a public servant is. And I've lost count of the number of times that you've proved that over these years, whatever the event was, whatever the issue was, whether it was in this room or in other venue somewhere. Your service to this community and really to service to your country and all that stuff can't be... We can't thank you enough for that. And personally, being that example for me, really how to behave, and sometimes I distract of that, I can't thank you for that. And watching your family, and as we've aged, and watching your family grow and so forth, it's been great, and I will miss you for one. Congratulations. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Drop, drop. I can't express more than what Councilman McGuigan said and what the resolution said, but I can remember 16 years ago, you asked me to get involved with the city as a, on the planning board, and then a year later, was asked to run for City Council, and started my 15th year with you sitting next to me this whole time, and words can't express other than what was already expressed. We'll miss you, and I've developed an excellent friendship with you, and it's going to be appreciated for years to come. Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Senator.
Madam President?
Yes.
I also'd like to thank the mayor for his leadership, and unfortunately, I wasn't here 16 years ago. I'm a lot younger than some of these other council people. But during this past three and a half years, going on my fourth year, the mayor has always shown us a dignity and a grace which a mayor needs to show as they lead the city, and he's done that in a very proficient way, and I really thank you for your guidance, sir. Thank you. Counsel President?
Senator Owen, yes.
Mayor Jack, you set the bar high for everybody here, being public servant, family man, you know, veteran. I mean, we cannot thank you enough. Every time, it's always a pleasure, you know, no matter if we're in the room, if we're in an event. You're always very well spoken, and I appreciate that a lot, and you'll be well missed.
Thank you, Michael.
I would like to just thank you for your leadership since I've been here. I don't have the benefit of 16 years, but I have five, sitting next to you, and I appreciate all the conversations and all the help that you've given me these last five years, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Jack, it's been a pleasure sitting here with you for the last couple of years. I believe that anybody that is running for office deserves our respect and our admiration, and you certainly have earned that during these last 16 years. Thanks for your friendship.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership and just what you bring to our community. I always enjoy your speeches and just how you always represent Summers Point.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have, I think, Mr. McGuigan or Mr. Dill is gonna...
Okay. Are we going out front? Yes, sir.
Anybody taking pictures?
All the years getting off and moving around.
Okay, I'll read the Act. We hereby present John L. Glasser, Jr., this award in honor of your distinguished service as Mayor of the City of Summers Point from 2008 to 2023, thanking you for 16 years of dedicated leadership and commitment, December of 2023. The clock is on for the...
This way. Always. To the right. There you go. Other right.
To the left.
To the left, to the left.
We're actually should bring the family up there.
What do you think, Doc? That's all right?
At least we jacked.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, John L. Glasser, the fourth. We're right.
I know that Jack, when he started, he was just looking for a job, right? And now he's, what, a chief of it? I'll announce that next year. So, why don't you take a picture with the tree you're doing on?
We're doomed.
It looks like our football team is here.
Yes.
Resolution Number 258, please.
Resolution Number 258 of 2023 saluting the success of the Mainland Regional High School Mustang Football Team, New Jersey State Champions, NJSIAA Group Four, whereas Mainland Regional High School serves the students of Summers Point, Northfield, and Lynnwood Communities, and whereas the Mainland Mustang Football Team, under the direction of head coach Chuck Smith, has exhibited unparalleled dedication, skill, and sportsmanship throughout the 2023 season, and whereas the Mustangs have not only displayed athletic prowess, but also demonstrated the values of discipline, perseverance, and unity, serving as an inspiration to the entire community, and whereas on November 25, 2023, the support, with the support of the Mainland Cheer Team and the U.S. Band's Group 1A National Champion Mainland Marching Band, the team capped a perfect 14-0 season with an excellent performance to beat Ramapo High School 56-0 to win the Group Four crown at Rutgers University's SHI Stadium, and whereas after the performance in the final game, the 2023 Mustangs will be remembered as one of the greatest teams in South Jersey history, having dominated when it mattered the most, winning its five playoff games by an average margin of 38 points. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Summers Point, on behalf of themselves and our community, hereby recognize and extend its sincerest congratulations to the Mainland Regional High School Mustang Football Players, Coaches, and Support Staff on their undefeated season and winning the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association Group Four State Championship, and it is further resolved that the Mayor and City Council of Summers Point salute the hard work and dedication of the team and present this resolution as a testament to their outstanding performance and an expression of pride from the community in their remarkable accomplishment. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments?
Counsel President? I just feel so proud that Mainland did such a great job and showed such leadership in the, on the football field, but it takes a lot just not playing the game. There's a lot of dedication, a lot of practice, there's a lot of hours that are put in by the coaches as well as the players, and of course, something the resolution doesn't mention is the fact that the family makes sure that the kids get there and moves them forward and sometimes to motivate them even when they're not motivated. So, the family puts a lot of time in, and that's certainly appreciated. And I just wanna, I'm just so proud that Mainland has accomplished what it's accomplished this year. Thank you. Counsel President?
Yes.
As alumnus of Mainland Regional Class 86, I really appreciate all your hard work and dedication. I mean, finally take states. I mean, that's amazing, Chuck. I mean, I graduated with your sister. All these guys are fantastic. I mean, just dedication, day in, day out, you know, just phenomenal. And for our community, we say thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Listen, when you're old and gray, and one of you is the mayor, and a couple of you are councilmen, you're still gonna reflect back on this, and it'll bring a smile to your face the rest of your life, your champions the rest of your life. Nobody will ever take that away from you, no matter what you do, and I know many of you will go to much bigger heights from this day forward and so forth. So, and like Mr. Dill said, you're such a source of pride in this community, and congratulations. Job well done.
Just one last comment, and I guess everybody said it pretty much all, but Mainland has always made the three communities so proud of you. Everything that yous do down there, everything, but especially on the football field. You do so well for this area and especially the Mainland communities. To say you're proud is an understatement. You just say that you honor us with your athletic abilities and that you've done so well. So, and like Sean said, I see us down the road being a mayor, senators, things like that. Right? You know, who knows? Maybe even a president, I don't know. We gotta have a new president from South Jersey, that's all there is to it.
At least we'll have one head football coach.
Yeah, exactly. Well, this is all a best of luck, and again, thank you for everything you guys have done. Congratulations.
Right.
(APPLAUSE).
And of course, some of the resolution doesn't mention is the fact that the family makes sure that the kids get there and moves them forward and sometimes motivate them even when they're not motivated. So the family puts a lot of time in, and that's certainly appreciated. And I just want to, I'm just so proud that Mainland has accomplished what it's accomplished this year. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Owen.
As alumnus of Mainland Regional Class 86, I really appreciate all your hard work and dedication. I mean, finally take states. I mean, that's amazing, Chuck. I mean, I graduated with your sister. All these guys are fantastic. I mean, just dedication, day in, day out, you know, just phenomenal. And for our community, we say thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Listen, when you're old and gray, and one of you is the mayor, and a couple of you are councilmen, you're still going to reflect back on this, and it'll bring a smile to your face the rest of your life, your champions the rest of your life. Nobody will ever take that away from you, no matter what you do. And I know many of you will go to much bigger heights from this day forward and so forth. And like Mr. Dill said, you're such a source of pride in this community, and congratulations. Job well done.
Just one last comment, and I guess everybody's said it pretty much all, but Mainland has always made the three communities so proud of you. Everything that Jews do down there, everything, but especially on the football field. You do so well for this area, and especially the Mainland communities. To say we're proud is an understatement. You just say that you honor us with your athletic abilities, and that you've done so well. So, and like Sean said, I see us down the road being a mayor, senators, things like that. Right? You know, who knows? Maybe even a president, I don't know. We gotta have a new president from South Jersey, that's all there is to it.
At least we'll have one head football coach.
Yeah, exactly. Well, this is all best luck, and again, thank you for everything you guys have done. Congratulations.
Right.
All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations. Be proud of yourself, enjoy this. You should be proud, this is teamwork, that's a lot of work, so. You want to come up front and accept your resolution, and we'll take some pictures?
Want a picture taken?
On behalf of a very grateful city, like I said, you make us all proud. I can't believe how much laughter and gratitude, especially the communities of Lynnwood and our community are so proud of you. So with that, I don't know, Coach, what can I say?
Congratulations.
Yes, yes. Resolution number 261, please.
Resolution number 261 of 2023, thanking the Green Thumb Garden Club of Summers Point. Whereas the Green Thumb Garden Club has been an institution in Summers Point for over 70 years, providing various landscaping activities and ideas for many members of the community. And whereas the club has had many landscaping and garden contests throughout the years, which have increased the awareness of the horticultural arts and encourage homeowners to continue to beautify their homes. And whereas the club was gracious in donating two Christmas wreaths, which have adorned the front doors of City Hall and added to the magic of the season for all those who enter. And whereas upon request, the club was also able to produce another beautiful wreath for the city's Pearl Harbor Remembrance Ceremony, which added a very nice touch to the significant event. And now therefore, is hereby resolved that the work of the Green Thumb Garden Club has had a positive impact in the city of Summers Point, and is further resolved that the Mayor and City Council of Summers Point conveys their gratitude to the Green Thumb Garden Club for the beautiful wreaths on behalf of the city employees and visitors to City Hall as well as the veterans community. And also be it further resolved that the Mayor and City Council wish the Green Thumb Garden Club a festive and happy holiday season.
May I have a motion, please?
Sub moved.
Second. Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
We do have members in the audience. It's year after year, decade after decade, the Green Garden Club continues to be such a force and contributor to this community, and not only through these beautiful wreaths, but all the programs and so forth, and all that social aspect, bringing your members together. It's a great job, and thank you for this, and Merry Christmas to you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Our resolution number 261 is approved. Representatives, do you want to come forward and...
My last night for making me work.
The president did ask for some time to give us feet, so. Go ahead. At least a gardening tip or two.
I just want to say on behalf of the residents here, the Pearl Harbor, my honor of all the residents of the town, to the people of the world, and to all who have also died, I would thank you very much. I thank you for everything that you do, and make some point on what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. We have amazing volunteers in our city, all of our committees, it's amazing the time they put in. Resolution number 267.
Resolution number 267 of 2023, recognizing and thanking Councilmember Bruno. Whereas on January 1st, 2021, Karen Bruno was sworn in as Ward Two Councilmember of the city of Summers Point to serve the city for three years. And whereas Councilmember Bruno has been a resident of Summers Point for 35 years. And whereas Councilmember Bruno currently teaches basic skills at Atlantic Cape Community College and writes a history column for the Ocean City Sentinel. And whereas Councilmember Bruno worked to establish the Atlanta County Women's Center. And whereas Councilmember Bruno served on the Business School Partnership Committee, the Good Old Days Scholarship Fund, the Summers Point Art Commission, and the Summers Point Historical Preservation Commission. And now therefore, is hereby resolved that the City Council of Summers Point express their appreciation and gratitude to Councilmember Bruno for serving three years for the betterment of Summers Point and its residents, and extends their best wishes to her and to her family.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah, Council President, I've had the honor of sitting next to Karen for the past three years, and not only has she done a fine job as a councilwoman, but I think I developed a friendship with her, and I appreciate all the discussions we've had on things other than just city business. And I hate to see you go, and you're going to be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I really enjoyed conversations with Karen. We had many conversations, and I really enjoyed the opportunity to call her and discuss not only council business and get her viewpoint on what she thinks is important and what the city needs to do. And we would sometimes agree 100%, and sometimes we'd leave that conversation saying, well, that's cool for you, and this is cool for me. So it was always enjoyable, and she brought a great deal of light and a great opinion to this council that helped us guide us in the right direction, I think. Thank you for your service, Karen.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Council President?
Yes, Mr. Owen.
Working with Ms. Karen Bruno across the board, it's always been a pleasure. I mean, a lot of good things that we've discussed in moving things forward with the city. Thank you for being an educator. I mean, my mom was an educator, and it's not easy, you know, but getting there, educating the students is really important. As well as working for the Sentinel all those years, cannot thank you enough, and you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Of course, I'll see you in the neighborhood, so plenty of good things to talk about.
Thank you.
I wish you good luck, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll just throw a few comments about anybody that gets up here and runs for office and is able to put up with what we have to put up with over the years is definitely honorable. So, and your service to this community means a lot. So thank you for being here, and thank you for what you've done for the last three years. And again, I wish you all the best luck. I got both of us retiring at the same time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, everything's been said, but I also appreciate all of our conversations, and I hope you won't be a stranger.
We'll do that.
We might get there.
You'll be out in the audience.
Yeah, exactly.
I can't wait.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, resolution number 267 is approved.
God, what can I say, Karen? On behalf of a very grateful city, thank you very much for your service, and we all wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you.
We have a representative from county committee, Maureen Kern. Mr. Mayor, if you want to step up again.
Yeah, I'm getting much better than Joe.
No, it's okay. Yeah, work just gets in the way of so many things.
Mayor, you have just been a wonderful mayor of Summers Point. Your heart has always been in the right place, so we're going to give you these proclamations. Our first is from Dennis Levinson. With our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your exemplary leadership and dedicated service as a U.S. Air Force and New Jersey Air National Guard veteran, a Norfield Police Officer and Captain, and Summers Point Councilman and Mayor, and hereby proclaims December 14th, 2023 is Jack Glasser Day in Atlanta County.
Oh, yay.
Whereas Mayor Jack Glasser has adorned many honorable hats in his esteemed professional and volunteer career, including serving and protecting our great county and local community. And whereas, as a military veteran, Mayor Jack Glasser served as Sergeant in the United States Air Force, and later as Master Sergeant of the New Jersey Air National Guard 177th Fighter Wing, the famed Jersey Devils. And whereas, Mayor Jack Glasser protected the city of Norfield with distinction, retiring after 25 years at the rank of Captain and Police Department. And whereas, Mayor Jack Glasser began his political career in November of 2006, when he was elected to Summers Point City Council, and was soon afterwards sworn in as a duly-elected mayor of Summers Point, a position he has held for 16 years. Whereas, in addition to his accomplished career, Mayor Jack Glasser found the time to be a member of the St. Joseph Knights of Columbus, a Eucharistic minister, a basketball coach, and served as the Bay Fest Committee and the Miss America Organization Security Committee. And whereas, as a strong advocate and supporter of the United States Veterans, Mayor Jack Glasser spearheaded the effort of creating the Summers Point Veterans Advisory Board. And whereas, though Mayor Jack Glasser will conclude his official duties as mayor of Summers Point on December 30th, 2023, his contributions to the city will gratefully forever remain.
Just a little bit more. Thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Who's that from, Maureen?
That's from the commissioners, the Atlanta County Commissioners.
Very honored to be here. So many years that she's served our town, kept me straight, said nice to me as council president, and it really kind of ebbles me up because I'm very honored to be here.
Find a place for all this stuff.
You have a big wall. Okay. Anyone have any communications to offer? In your packet, just to keep everyone up to date, there is a letter from Judge Blee in reference to the county court system, and just what's going on there, and they didn't read the letter, it's just that there's some towns that wanted to withdraw, they're not going to be able to at this time, but they've been promised that their expenses will be held in 2024, and they're going to make some positive changes, and hopefully that'll work out for everyone. I just wanted to keep everyone up to date on what's going on there. Mayor, anyone else have any communication? Okay. The mayor.
Oh, I guess for the last time, so. I'm going to start off by the meat stuff, and then I'm just going to add with some of my comments, my final comments, I guess. First of all, the good state of New Jersey that we all love. One of the projects that I've always been pushing for is the straightening out of the end of Route 9 as it turns into the bike path for going over the Garden State Parkway. Many letters going back and forth and correspondence and so, but the bottom line is state turned around and said, we're not going to advance any further projects as far as that goes. In other words, we're kind of stuck with what we have, and that's what I read out of this letter, short and to the point. It's a disappointment to the city. We always knew that Route 9 was not in that area from Summers Point Maisland Road to the foot of the Parkway, was not conducive for bike riding. We wanted to make any improvements in there, and it just went, the way I see this letter, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, council president, they're not supporting us. So that's a disappointment. I do have a letter here from Danny Levinson. Dear Mayor Glasser, I'm ready to support the city of Summers Point's application for the New Jersey Department of Transportation for funding under Safe Routes to school grant. I understand the city has been working with Summers Point Board Education to develop a school travel plan, and to prepare this application, funding for this grant will allow Summers Point to make safety improvements to West Soil Drive along Fur Street near Summers Point Bike Path. Summers Point has made great strides to make this community more walkable. This grant will provide additional enhancement to improve the safety of children who walk or bike to school. I support these efforts to protect the safety of our residents and enhance the quality of life, and encourage the NJ DOT to strongly consider this application of funding. Certainly, Danny Levinson. And again, Danny Levinson has been a great supporter for Summers Point. Now I get into my comments. What can you say about our holiday or Christmas parade, besides it rained? But it was a great night. The Historical Society, thank you, you did a fabulous job putting it together. Of course, we had to run after the Chief of Police, but we did get off the street in 45 minutes. So Pearl Harbor Day, service because of rain was held at the American Legion, it was very nice service. Congressman Van Drew was there, and it turned out real well. Last Saturday, we were able to do the wreath placing in the bay, which is what we do every year to remember those who lost their lives on December 7th. We were also able to dedicate Gibbs' Adamno for Oscar Schmidt, who, as we all know, is Medal of Honor winner from Summers Point. With that, I just want to make a few comments as I walk out the door, and some people are laughing at me, saying, are you going to miss it? Of course I'm going to miss this. I've worked with some really great people up here. You know, my family calls me the quiet man, I've never really made long speeches most of the time because I forget what I'm going to say, but the other times is because coming from law enforcement, we have a tendency to say less, and to be careful with whatever we say, we can always get cross-examined on. Mr. Smith got a kick out of that one. It was an honor to be elected these 16 years. The people of this town honored me to represent them, and there's nothing more humbling to me than the people saying to me, we want you to be our mayor. And for four times, they turned around and said... And for four times, they turned around and said, we want to do there. So, very, very, very humbling to me. Um, I gotta thank God for the strength, the courage, uh, putting up with everything we have to put up with and keep me on the right path, uh, and courage and everything else. Uh, even though my family is left, I want to thank my wife Diane, my son Jack, and my daughter Chris, and their spouses, and my sister, Sister Maria, and all my family for support. Because when we come out of a rough night of legislating and doing the city business, we go home to our family and they're the ones that have to listen to us. So, uh, they have done a great job for me and they've always been there. To all the elected officials who supported me, um, you know, you, I thank Sean and Howard for the great presentation tonight. Uh, for all of you, I thank you. Howard, for 14 years, I've been sitting next to this guy and he's been nudging me, checking me, holding me in my chair, keeping me from sitting down when I was supposed to be standing up, um, but giving wise counsel, not only in this forum but in planning board. Um, and I thank you for everything and I appreciate that. Um, many years ago, the late great George Hyatt said to me, you ever have a problem, you ever need something, you need to work it out, but the bottom line is you go to Wes Sweeney. Wes Sweeney, our city administrator for many years, was a great source for me and a great backup and was somebody I could go to and get help when I needed. So, now I say to you, our elected officials, who will be counting on you, our newly elected officials, Benny Tapp and Charlie Habecorn, that whenever you need help, you never have a problem, you go to Jason Frost. Because, let's face it, you know, it was my honor to recommend Jason for this position. I stand by it. I will always stand by it. Uh, he was, has been just another great source of support. And when we're all up here doing our elected official stuff, he's the one that's running the city. And, uh, he's done it pretty good. So, I thank him and Wes for everything they've done. I was fortunate to have two great ladies as city clerks. Uh, the great Carol DeGrassy, who I, I went to seventh grade together with Paul Hartson. And, of course, Lucy, who promised me she wouldn't leave until I was gone. So, I thank you for being the professionals and the ladies that you have been. You have helped me through this 16 years and I just thank you for everything you've done. Um, all the volunteers of the city, you know, you can, I stand here and say, all these people, all the fire department, all the people, emergency management, all these people that make this city. It's everybody working together. It's our, uh, it's our elected officials, it's our professionals. Um, it's everyone together, working together to make Summers Point what it is. Our professionals, what can I say? I've, I've had, been lucky enough to, been able to work with the great Jim Franklin and, of course, our own Tommy Smith, who, uh, over the years, we've banged heads once or twice, but he's been a source of professional information and keeping us on a right path. And so glad he's around. Um, like I said, our city employees, all our city employees, work so hard for the city. It's not just a career for them, it's a passion, it's a passion to do what's right for a town. I've been fortunate enough to, um, be the mayor with four great chiefs of police, Oliver Mathis, Salamini, Mike Boyd, and of course, Speedy Gonzalez himself, Bobby Summers. Um, you know, I just go back and remember Bobby Summers when he was a 16-year-old kid in Northfield and I used to chase after him then and what he's done now and he's done a great job as Chief of Police. And I end this kind of, running off and rambling. Um, one of the things I've never really, well, not that I was embarrassed, but I just never really put it out there. Right before I went to the Air Force, I found myself without a job. And Kurt Gody's uncle, which is a guy by the name of George Gody, who was a councilman here, got me a job. Got me a job as janitor here at City Hall. Um, I walked it around, I cleaned up and took out the trash and all that for about a month or so before I went to the Air Force. So, it just goes to show you that you can be, start as a janitor and wind up in the big seat as mayor. So, um, with that, I'm going to end this by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. I wish Mayor-elect Benny Tapp all the best. Benny knows what it's about with the city. And I wish him and Charlie Habecorn, who are becoming a PUA next year, all the best of them. And I wish us all, and again, I wish us all the best of luck with you. Thank you.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay. Mr. Smith. Okay. Uh, Mr. Snyder.
Yes, I just had a few items. The city participated in the Atlantic County Road Safety Plan. Uh, there was a second meeting, workshop meeting. The purpose of the Atlantic County Road Safety Plans to identify and prioritize strategies and actions to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes. County municipal roads, uh, strategies may include infrastructure measures as well as strategies related to improving education, enforcement, and emergency response. So, the city is making comments with the county and moving forward with that.
And if I could just, I attended the last, both of the last two workshops and it's, it's really interesting and they're actually listening to the stakeholders and the people that are out there, police force, the mayors, the councils. Um, and, uh, and I think it's going to be great that we can get back some good advice on how to handle some problem areas in our roads, so.
Yes, this is very good input.
Mm-hmm.
Ocean Avenue Construction continues. All the concrete work is done. Uh, there's some pipe work to be done hopefully next week and then it should be ready to pave. Um, trying to get it done before the asphalt plans close for the winter. Hopefully, the weather cooperate. Colwick, Extin, Devon, all the pipe work is complete. The concrete work is about 60% complete. They're trying to rush through that. Bold jobs, they will not be working before, between Christmas and New Year, just so that residents don't have to deal with construction and moving cars and everything. So, that's the plan right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, committee reports. Uh, we're going to start with Economic Development Advisory Commission. Um, Mr. Chuck Wescott has a small present, a short presentation for us.
And a, and a big ask. Uh, Madam President, members of the City Council, I want to thank you for your help this year in getting economic development, uh, in this city back on track. Um, as you guys all know, um, the previous firm that was marketing the city was let go several years ago and things kind of fell by the wayside. And those of us on economic development figured that our first goal for '23 should be to get the city back on the map from a publicity standpoint. And to do that, we hired a, with your help, hired a marketing firm, Performance Marketing. I think they've done a fabulous job. I know my co-chair Charlie has presented data on, um, what they've accomplished and what we've accomplished as far as social media. Um, we've also updated the city's website with help of Doug Schalcross. Um, we also started a new campaign, which you may or may not have seen. I just got these cards, we just got these Monday and I'm going to leave some of these out. It's very simple. You just shoot the QR code with your phone, it goes right to the webpage, the city webpage. You enter an email address, you'll get updated on all the happenings in town. We send out a monthly newsletter. This is just the beginning. We've only sent out three of them so far. We're already up to about 150 names. We'd like to see three times that by spring of next year with a lot more content to come. Our goals for 2024, we've talked about a bunch of different things, including keeping the momentum going with marketing. But one of the things that's coming up in '24 is the city has to revise their master plan. Um, we're strongly advocating that, uh, the city spend some money and allow us to join the Atlantic County Economic Alliance. One of the big benefits of joining the alliance is that they contract with a company called Triad Associates, whose specialty is working with master plans. Specifically, where we want to put together an economic development portion of the master plan. Um, this is one of those elements in master plan that would open us up to far more potential grants. Free money is always good. Um, I know we've done a great deal with, uh, the grant money that we've gotten. Public safety along the, the public transit path, the Bay Avenue area, um, the lighting this year is all new. Uh, the city got a tremendous number of grants for the marina. We would love to see more money come into town so we can do more for the town. To do that, we need to join the Atlantic County Economic Alliance. Uh, to my understanding, we have money left in our budget, which can cover this cost. I know that you've all been provided with some materials. There was a presentation that, a PowerPoint that ACEA put together for you. I hope you reviewed that. There's also a draft of the Northfield Economic Development Plan that the same Triad Associates helped them prepare for their revised master plan, as well as, I believe, there were some financials for the ACEA. I can tell you that as a representative of the Summers Point Business Association, I have attended about 80% of the board meetings of the ACEA for the last two years. And I'm quite impressed with their activities and their success on behalf of Atlantic County. Thinking of it in a smaller scale in our city, I see nothing but potential impossibilities with being a member of their group and the forces and the contacts and the connections that they can bring to bear to help us. So, I'm asking for a resolution that City Council would approve membership in the ACEA and allocate the funds necessary to accomplish that. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Questions about the?
I appreciate everything that economic development has done. And having been here for 15, almost 15 years, I've seen its high points, I've seen its low points, and I think right now it's at the very highest point. And I think you're going, your group is going to strive to make it better. And I'm proud of the work that you people have accomplished. Thank you.
They've got a good committee.
I just want to say, you know, I've been, I'm on that committee, so I am privy to all the meetings and they've worked really hard and they've been very thorough. They're not taking this membership lightly. They've done their research, um, as to all the benefits and taken their time and gotten the information. And I do agree that it would be very beneficial. And one, the other things that I do want to say is they have a plan for this membership. We're not going to just join and, but the EDAC has a plan, what they expect to get out of it. And I think that's probably the most important part. We're not going to just spend the money and then wait. They do have a plan, so.
Yeah, we're not looking at it as a country club membership.
Right.
No, this is a working relationship.
Mm-hmm. So, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. What's the cost to join?
$5,000.
$5,000.
For, it's a year, it's $5,000 a year. And the reason we did this tonight is because the money was already encumbered and we needed to do it for 2023. So, it won't be in next year's budget. This will be for the 2024 membership.
It was '22 money encumbered for '23.
Right, actually, yeah.
And we'll get a list of all the things that we get from that membership, you know, what's, what's going on in terms of it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah, the estimated value of the, the planning work is far more than the cost of membership alone. Uh, plus, we have one of, one of ACEA's members, Max Schlescher, is with us tonight. Um, Max is a member of economic development as well and he came last night to the meeting and, and just tipped us with, you know, three spreadsheets of information already. Everybody on the committee is just like, there's so much data in here. There's so much information that they can provide us that they have access to, so many resources that they have access to, as well as the talent to be able to analyze it and make use of the data. And again, our goal is to take some of this data and look at where are weak points, but also where are strong points? Where can we continue to promote the businesses that we do well? And, and we found out Monday night, obviously, healthcare, we're way above. And also in the travel and tourism, the, the restaurant and, and food and beverage industry. You know, we want to continue to support them and then we want to figure out what else are we weak in? What can we bring up a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I just need a, does anyone have any objection, I guess, to the funds being?
Is there a possibility, I know in the past we did an ordinance, off the cuff, can we do a resolution authorizing, yeah, just joining now and waive the 24-hour rule?
I don't think we need one.
Or do we not need it?
Counsel can direct me to move forward with.
It's under the $5,000.
Okay. I think, I'd just like to make a motion that the business administrator move forward with the funds to, to join that organization for the economic development.
How about we have the first motion, waving for you.
Well, you don't, but you said you don't need a resolution, though. Because it's under the threshold.
Motion, we don't need a motion.
We just needed a consensus, everyone's okay with.
Yeah.
An objection?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Great, we'll move forward. Thank you.
That's for sure. Okay.
Yeah, and ultimately, this will, will be on a bill list that council will approve for it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports to offer? Hearing nine, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Any comments? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Uh, ordinance number, uh.
I make a motion, we silence our telephone.
Could I have a motion to open for public comment for ordinance number 26?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 26. Hearing nine, could I have a motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Um, could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 26?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 26 is adopted. Ordinance number 27.
An ordinance amending sections 114-143B and 114-144B of Article 22, site plan review and adding requirements for bicycle parking provisions.
Could I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number 27?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 27. Could I have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion for ordinance, to adopt ordinance number 27?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 27 is adopted. Ordinance number 29.
Ordinance number 29 of 2023, an ordinance repealing and creating a new Article 2 of Chapter 34 of the city of Summers Point.
Could I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number 29?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 29. Motion to close?
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number? Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 29?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 29 is adopted. Ordinance number 30.
Ordinance number 30, 2023, an ordinance amending section 114-51 and HC-1 zoning district landscaping and fences in reference to planting requirements.
May I have a motion to open for public comment on ordinance number 30?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on ordinance number 30. Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 30?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number 30 is adopted. Could I have a motion to open for public comment for the rest of our resolutions?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only.
Patricia Pearson, 587 Markford, Summers Point. The authorization of hiring a full-time safety telecommunicator, is that a new position or is there somebody here that left?
Somebody left.
Somebody left and you're replacing them?
Yes.
Okay. And the other one is the deputy court administrator, same story?
Yes.
Okay. And the sewer, all the sewer work that you're doing, you're, and you're sharing with the...
We're entering into a shared service.
Okay.
For Egg Harbor Township.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motion to close?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution number 248, please.
Resolution number 248 of 2023 Budget Appropriation Transfer.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes.
Councilmember DePampelis?
Yes.
Councilmember McCary?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Councilmember McWiggen?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes.
Resolution number 248 is adopted. Number 250, please.
Resolution number 250 of 2023, canceling outstanding checks and bankrupt reconciliation items.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 250 is adopted. Number 251.
Resolution number 251 of 2023, excuse me, tax overpayment refund block 1313 lot 8.01.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 251 is adopted. Number 253, please.
Resolution number 253 of 2023, authorizing execution and delivery of First Amendment to a redevelopment agreement between the City of Summers Point and Popco Summers Point LLC for the redevelopment, a block 718, lots 15, 16, and 17.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 253 is adopted. Number 254.
Resolution number 254 of 2023, resolution authorizing emergency purchase pursuant to contract for sanitary sewer emergency repairs and miscellaneous maintenance.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 254 is adopted. Number 256.
Resolution number 256 of 2023, resolution authorizing the City of Summers Point to enter into shared services agreement with Egg Harbor Utility Municipal Utilities Authority for the purposes of sharing sanitary sewer maintenance services.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. McWiggen.
I'd like to, first I'll point out that this is a very good thing for the city. We're going to be doing some maintenance work for EHT, and that both Mr. Horning, as well as Mr. Frost should be congratulated for getting this across the finish line. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 256 is adopted. Number 257.
Resolution number 257 of 2023, resolution supporting JES EDA Aspire application, a resolution in support of an Aspire application to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for affordable housing development to be owned, operated, managed, and constructed by Oasis at Great Bay LLC, an entity affiliated with JES Group Enterprises Inc. on block 1943, lots 23, block 1944, lot 3, block 1945, lot 2.02, and block 1946, lot 1, more commonly known as 901 Maze Landing Road.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 257 is adopted. Number 259.
Resolution number 259 of 2023, employee advancement of Emerald Hornig.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. McWiggen.
One of my favorite employees. Thank you. Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 255 is adopted, congratulations. Number 260.
Resolution number 260 of 2023, employment advancement of Brianna McNair.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any comments?
Yeah, Council President, when the public sees these advancements, there's a process that goes through as far as recommendations are concerned. The department head recommends to the business administrator, upon approval of those two, then this resolution is brought before council, and a lot of times, I believe in this case, education requirements are also involved in these advancements. Okay? And I would just like to congratulate both employees for their dedication and wanting to advance in their careers, and more than supportive of both of these, and any other employee who wants to support, wants to be, advance their careers. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 260 is adopted. Number 262.
Resolution number 262, hiring a full-time public safety telecommunicator, namely Heather Imperator.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 262 is adopted. Number 263.
Resolution number 263 of 2023, authorizing the hiring of deputy court administrator, namely Tyler J. Serwinski.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 263 is adopted. Number 264.
Resolution number 264, 2023, change order to contract number 119 of 2022, stormwater cleaning and video inspection.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 264 is adopted. Number 265.
Resolution number 265 of 2023, urging the legislature to recognize and undertake action relative to insurance costs imposed on Summers Point and other municipalities.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments? This was a request that came from the League of Municipalities, and this affects every municipality in this county, so it's, it's pretty important. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 265 is adopted. Number 266.
Resolution number 266 of 2023, resolution authorizing the usage of contracts with approved state contract vendor VP Mailing Solutions pursuant to NJSA 48:1-11A and NJAC 5:34-729C.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 266 is adopted. Could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Uh, anyone have any old business to discuss? Hearing none? New business. We need to set the date for our reorganization meeting, which will be on January, it's Friday, January 5th. Um, we have to have it within the first seven days of the new year, so we always do it on a Friday.
That's fine.
I guess we're leaving it at, so... Have to leave it at 7:00? It'll be at 7:00 PM on January 5th. Uh, we need approval for a social affair permit for Roberts Johnson Post 2189 BFW on 12/29/23 from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Assuming all their paperwork is in.
Everything's in order, yes.
Everybody's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
That's approved, thank you. Um, the last thing I just wanted to discuss on your new business is the times for our council meeting. It's been suggested that maybe we could do these a little bit earlier, maybe instead of 7:00, maybe 6:00. Just wanted to see how everybody feels about that. Karen, what do you think?
Great idea.
I'll make a comment on that. I think that that's a little bit too early for people who work. It's difficult to get here on time at 6:00. Um, I don't know, I think it may be a difficult thing to do. I understand at 7:00, maybe we go in a little bit later. We just have to become more proficient in running a meeting to make it go faster. But, aside from, I don't know, 7:00 seems a little tough. We have some council people who actually work in Philadelphia and have to travel a great distance, and I would want to think of that person and make sure that he's here on time.
Council, Council President, I'm opposed to moving it up, 7:00? I feel in most cases, I feel rushed even to make 7:00, and to make 6:00 when family, people who work, like Kit and the councilman said, it's just, I think 7:00 is more than fair. I would be opposed to it, to changing the time to 6:00. People who need time, have family dinners and things of that nature.
Okay. Mr. DePampelis?
Well, I think 7:00 is wonderful.
Okay, there we go.
I will speak for the segment of council that works in Philadelphia, as Mr. McCary referenced, and actually, it doesn't bother me if we do it at 6:00. I will make that adjustment, and hopefully I can stop working soon. But, you know, I could go either way. I guess it would be a little easier on some of the city employees.
Yeah, right. Mr. Allen?
I figure if we can meet halfway and have like 6:00 in spring and summer, and 7:00 fall and winter, but can't have my cake and eat it too.
How about 6:30? It doesn't matter to me either, either way.
Yeah, but it looks like...
Council believes that 7:00 forever and ever, to change the time to me just doesn't make any sense. What would you accomplish, other than the fact it's an hour earlier? And we still have to be here. I think we're pretty efficient, okay? This is abnormal for us to be out here at 8:30.
Well, we also only had one meeting this month.
And we only had one meeting this month. Normally, when we have it at 7:00, we're out of here by 8:00. So it's only an hour, and I think that it's been a tradition to be 7:00, and I think it should remain 7:00.
Okay, so we'll leave it at 7:00? That's good. Kind of a little consensus. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for consideration.
You're welcome, Mr. McWiggen.
Appreciate it.
Discussion of the bills, Mr. Frost?
Sure. Assuming we have multiple record payments, one for $200, one for $15,441, one cent, one for $18,000, $277.73, one for $75,683.60, as well as a bill listed today, $2,299,215.25, four record payments and one bill listed.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Dr. Robert Goldberg here in Summers Point. I wanted the City Council to look back on ordinance number 25, which comes out in 2022. What prompted it was a letter I got from the city clerk to my office this past month, and per New Jersey state law, public law 2022, and City of Summers Point ordinance, all business owners are required to register a certificate of insurance of general liability, $500,000. There's an annual fee of $150,000, and I'm wondering, what is that all about? I went to the city clerk with my liability insurance, and I can assure you, virtually every business is going to have liability insurance if somebody slips on their sidewalk, that kind of thing. Showed them this, it took about 30 seconds for them to acknowledge that I have the insurance, and I questioned and I asked council, why is there a fee of $150,000? That's absurd. If I see a patient in consultation for an hour, I can tell you Medicare doesn't pay me $150,000. I would think a more reasonable fee, and under the law, under both state and your own ordinance, it says establish a reasonable fee. When you look at Merriam-Webster's dictionary, reasonable means basically reasonable and not excessive, and I would bring it up to you as a thought to lower that to a much more reasonable fee rather than $150 bucks, when it took them, what, 20 seconds to look at this and say, yep, you got insurance, doc, and that's why I'm bringing this up. This is not going to break me $150, but it means moving money from other parts that I've spent it on, like donations to our fire department that I've always donated to, and I will have to move those donations to this and other things along that nature, and I'd like you to reconsider that fee. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
God warning, counsel, those who may or not see me in the past 22 years, my name is John Sedaktulus, now proprietor of the Summers Point Diner. First off, I want to thank some of the people in the audience, some of the council people up here. You know, less than we lost my father, so thanks for the support and, you know, kind words. He was here for 46 years as a businessman, not to go in history, he was a huge part of Summers Point. Mr. Glasser, I know better than most of yous. Who knows?
Great guy, guy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Gats, on your retirement. Here we are, 10 months later. And eight months ago, I had a very disappointing meeting with Councilman McWiggen and McCary. I was threatened. In my place of business, over a business deal that we are going, and it somehow got twisted with a message that was supposed to be in a positive aspect. Now I'm short of it. We are in agreement to try to get a billboard up on our property. It was, United Street voted down at council, and it kind of was funny, and then it was... It was unanimously voted down at council, and it kind of was funny, and then the thing's kind of making sense that the good old boy thing was enacted on this, as far as conversations, pre-hearing us, pleading a case to put a billboard up between my property and DiOrio's. I have hired an attorney, to my knowledge, Mr. McGuigan, via lead statute 2C-30-2. Well, I'm sure of it. The conversation at the end went, you know, Broadway has a right-of-way that kind of goes across your parking spaces that face Circle Liquor, and, you know, that's it. During that meeting, Mr. McGuigan, Mr. McCary was quiet for the most part, stressed his personal with other public meetings of how the City of Summers Point does not want a digital billboard. So, just want to let you guys know that we have hired council, and I find it very disturbing that for over 40 years, we've been a huge support in Summers Point on every aspect known to man, never a problem, always there. And it just seems like BS that, you know, his body's not even cold yet, and I'm getting threats with something that most of yous weren't even involved with when the circle was being talked about. I personally sat as a spokesperson for most of those restaurants, and using the word "I" again, was instrumental with John Ginza, rest his soul for getting his entrance, him and Crowdtrap not sharing one to ruin their business, and my neighbor with Benny DiOrio, how we worked together with ours. So, again, I find it disheartening, dishonest, and absurd that I couldn't have been notified, or my family, in a better manner, as opposed to being, again, threatened on, we could take your parking right if you don't stop proceeding forward with your billboard. So, thank you very much. Anyone needs to know, Mike Silagato out of Margate will be representing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, it's pretty obvious we can't make comment on this.
No comment, no comment. It's under litigation. Motion to close, please?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Motion to pay the bills?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, well, any further comments from the governing body?
Well, the last comment I'll make is thank you for the honors this evening. You humble me with your words, I appreciate it. I constantly wish you all the best of luck, so I think you'll move on, and governance canceled, do the best of your ability, so thank you.
Madam President? Yes, I, as we talked about earlier, I find it hard to believe that we've reached this point, Jack.
Yeah, you know, it's so much talk and comment, but I mean, the 20 of them were out campaigning the first three years.
Yeah, yeah.
I have stories with just about everybody up here, over the years.
I just sort of remember, you know, once I got elected, and I, my campaign team, and I said to my campaign team, what am I, what am I going to do now? They said to me, you do whatever Jack does. You'll be okay.
Sleep. That's it. No, it's, it's an honor serving with you all. And for me, using the word honor is above all. So it's an honor in this society, sharing a field of battle.
Jack, you keep saying that this is your last meeting. Think you ought to be a little careful of that, because you never know.
If you saw her in the backseat, probably, sixteen years is pretty much...
Other mayors have come back.
It's great. Man, Jack, we wish you well.
Yes.
On your health and everything else, and I know the Veterans Advisory Committee always will be right there in the future, being a part of, which, which...
Look, I'll be honest with you, I'm not going anywhere, I'm still going to be living in Summers Point. You know, I'll be, as MacArthur said, just fade away. I don't think I'll fade away, but I will definitely be around. You know, it's just that it's, it's time, and I think we all find that in our service. It's been, it's been many years. I was lucky enough that, when I was a police officer, to be, to understand and get a firsthand look at, at government, municipal government, and that helped me out throughout the years. But with a lot of people, even the people that have been and come and gone, you know, specifically Kirk Garty, who, one of the best. It's just that we, you learn from each other, and we feed off each other, and the bottom line is try to do our very best for what we believe that is best for the town. And I think that's what it comes down to. And you all have to have that passion. I once was told, when I was first running, you have to have that passion, that fire, to do what's right. And you all have that in just different ways, and just, I wish, again, I wish us all the best of luck. You know, I have so much confidence that Dennis Tapp and Charlie will come up here and supplement and do just the same. I hate to see Karen go, but it just, you know, with all you, again, your job's important, and that's the governing of the city. And, you know, it's part of this age-old way of life that we have here in America, so good luck.
I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Let's have a prosperous and happy new year. Everybody stay healthy.
Hope so.
Motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Karen, it certainly was a pleasure.
Was it, thank you.
It's been next to you pretty few years.
Was it, thank you.
It's been next to you pretty few years. I'm definitely off.
Jack, and I brought around a couple of my old man sitting next to me.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
Sounds respectable.
Yeah, absolutely.